Good evening, I will call to order the Lincoln County Board of Education Monthly Meeting for October the 11th. Thank you to our community members that are here, thank you to our staff, and especially thank you to my fellow board members for your dedication and service to the students of Lincoln County. If you will please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Tonight I have with me some special guests that I would like to introduce to you. If you would go ahead and stand up so everybody can see your smiling faces. We have Joshua Pablaco and Jen Pablaco, and they are both Love Memorial students. And Joshua is in Ms. Bergen's class in 5th grade, and Jen is in Ms. Beal's class in 3rd grade, correct? Yeah? Okay. Well, I just want to tell our audience and people that are watching what your principals and your teachers had to say about you, because this is really great stuff. Joshua is an excellent student who exceeds expectations with the quality of his work and his character. He's conscientious, hardworking, and responsible, and he is a great example to others, and contributes so much to our classroom and to the school, and he is such a blessing, and we are so glad that he is part of the Love Memorial family. And then Jen, in Ms. Beal's class, Jen is a student who comes ready to learn every day. She has a lot of enthusiasm and motivation, she always has a smile and a bubbly personality, and she is confident in her abilities from completing tasks to helping staff and working with her peers. She's a great friend to others and an excellent example of a Love Memorial Cardinal. We are so thankful that y'all are with us tonight. Thank you to your family for letting you come, and if you all please stand, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause. Next, board members, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Make the motion.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our special presentations and recognitions. Board members, if you would join me around front.
Good evening, board members. Have you seen from your packet, we have several presentations and recognitions for this evening? And I was just talking to Mr. Kay, the Principal of Love Memorial, about intention, and I think you will find that all of the recognitions that we are having this evening will show you how intentional we are with Lincoln County and how we operate with our students and our staff and our community. So this time, our first recognition, I would like to recognize Mrs. Kathy Boziak from Lincolnson High School. Ms. Boziak? So, Mrs. Boziak, she is no stranger to our board recognitions, and she is here tonight because she has been selected as a North Carolina Space Education Ambassador. She's joining a cohort of 16 master teachers representing 11 school districts across the state. The goal of the North Carolina Space Education Ambassador program is to assist NASA Langley Research Center, correct, Ms. Boziak, in the dissemination of NASA mission materials via a statewide network of master teachers. The team is very, very excited to have Mrs. Boziak. I think she is in the midst of meetings at this point, and we are very, very happy and proud of you that you are representing our district in this way. So congratulations, Ms. Boziak.
Congratulations, Kay.
Thanks.
Love you, darling. Feature, feature. Whoops.
Next, we would like to recognize Mrs. Heather Spicola, and also Ms. Spicola is from East Lincoln Middle School, and she is no stranger to our recognition, so Ms. Spicola? So, Ms. Spicola is enrolled in the 2223 North Carolina Energy Literacy Fellows Program. This is a year-long teacher professional development program that combines hands-on STEM investigations with place-based explorations of energy production facilities, energy research facilities, and relevant careers, and this is directly tied to her CTE position that she has at East Lincoln Middle School. The goal of this program is to provide our teachers with up-to-date curriculum that is relevant, with relevant content, including those STEM-based activities that showcase current energy science, technologies, and careers to promote energy literacy among students and also to enhance the energy workforce. So, Ms. Spicola, we are very, very proud of you and congratulations.
She missed one. It's all right. Congratulations to that.
Good evening. Just wanted to recognize Mr. Scott Carpenter for our 2022 Wells Fargo Principal of the Year. Come on up. I'm gonna go ahead and start reading. Mr. Carpenter was nominated and selected as this year's Principal of the Year by his colleagues, who said that he has done an amazing job bringing back the pride and swagger back to Lincolnson High School. Lincolnson Community has, excuse me, and the Lincolnson Community by raising expectations, making great hires, and focusing on classroom instruction. His colleagues went on to say he embodies Principal of the Year, he loves his schools and shows it. Mr. Carpenter bleeds black and gold and has made a huge impact in the structure that takes place each day. He makes safety a priority. One colleague says of Mr. Carpenter, "As a fellow colleague and a parent of a student at Lincolnson High, I am proud that my child attends a school that is providing a quality education." Mr. Carpenter continues to instill school pride in the students and staff at Lincolnson High School. Mr. Carpenter has served as principal at Lincolnson since June of '21. He began his educational career with Lincoln County Schools in 1993. Sorry, I'm dating, they can pretty much guess your age now. Prior to working at Lincolnson High, Mr. Carpenter taught 6th grade at Lincoln Middle for five years before serving as assistant principal at East Lincoln Middle and Pumpkin Center. He served as the principal at Lincolnson Middle from 2001 to 2014. He also served as principal at Battleground Elementary and Estre Lauder Elementary. Mr. Carpenter has a total of over 29 years in education. Mr. Carpenter will now go on to compete with local award recipients for the southwest region of the state. After the state selection process is completed, one principal will be selected as the 2022 Wells Fargo Principal of the Year. Congratulations, Scott. Now for the NCCAT Beginning Teacher of the Year 2022, this will go to Ms. Victoria Blake from East Lincoln Middle School. Ms. Blake was nominated by her principal, Ms. Heather Myers, who said that while some first-year teachers may find the first year in their own classroom overwhelming, Ms. Blake has confidence and poise in the classroom beyond your years and experience. As her administrator, Ms. Myers attributes her success to her positive relationship with students and her willingness to accept and grow from feedback. She works collaboratively with her teammates, her grade level, and her mentor to meet her instructional and leadership responsibilities for the school. Her students respect her, and she makes intentional efforts to connect with them personally. When classroom management issues arise, she handles them with a calm presence and is not afraid to seek feedback. Her willingness to engage with parents is also refreshing and part of her formula for success, as she communicates in a positive way with parents even with addressing classroom concerns. While there is certainly room for growth with any new teacher, Ms. Blake is laying a solid foundations for a successful career. Congratulations. Also, a little tidbit here, Dr. Belcher was her elementary school principal, Ms. Carpenter was her middle school principal, and I was her high school principal, so that was pretty awesome to hear about that. Congratulations. Congratulations. All right. Now to ejection-free schools, we have two, East Lincoln and Lincolnson High School. East Lincoln couldn't be here today, they told me they have a lot of sports activities going on, so they couldn't make it, but Mr. Carpenter is here for Lincolnson High School. And what I'll say about that is, North Carolina High School Athletic Association recognizes this, it's a pretty big deal, and only 158 schools were recognized. I say only, that's a little more than half, but it's tough to get it. That was one of my goals every year for the school I was at, and we only got one, so it's a pretty big deal when you get it. So, just very proud of Lincolnson and East Lincoln. Come on up, Scott. And then last, Coach Jonathan Hancock, he was selected to the East-West All-Star Game. He's gonna be the head coach for the West team, the game will happen in July. He couldn't make it today, he's also the golf coach, and they have a match today. But I will just talk about him just quickly. He started, he went to high school at Inca in 1984, Mars Hill in 1988, and got his master's degree in physical education from Gardner-Webb in 1999. He's coached at Lincolnson High School, Forest View High School, Eastburg High School, Mallard Creek High School, and now at East Lincoln. His overall career record is 436 wins and 258 losses, which is pretty good. He's had nine conference championships, four conference tournament championships, four sectional championships. He's been Conference Coach of the Year eight times, Gaston Gazette Coach of the Year twice, and District 10 Coach of the Year one time. So congratulations, that's a big honor for him to be able to be the head coach of the West team. The game will be in July, hopefully we'll get to go see it, and hopefully the West team wins. So congratulations to him.
So our final recognitions this evening, it's a new recognition that we're having this year, it's called Intentional Inspiration. So that was designed and thought out in regards to our hashtag, our theme of acting always with intention. So tonight, we are recognizing some intentional inspirators across our district. So at this point, at this time, it's Ms. Crystal Beal's, if you would please come up from Battleground. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about this intentional inspiration that comes from Ms. Crystal Beal's at Battleground. From talking to Ms. Beal as she came this evening, Battleground has started some clubs this year, so Ms. Beal's is in charge of a club that serves K-2 students, and she also serves 3-5 students. So let's listen to how she works with these students, how intentional she is, we talked a little bit about that. At Battleground, Ms. Ely says, "We are proud of our children, and we're working on teaching them how to be proud of themselves." And our jewelry club, with Ms. Beal's sponsors, "Students are creating age-appropriate pieces of jewelry to take home and to be proud and to show off to everyone their creativity. This is a time for those students to brag about themselves, to their friends, their community, and the people that they live with." Ms. Ely says she loves that Ms. Beal's is teaching these students to be proud of themselves and all of their accomplishments. She's also said that if they can't cancel Club Day, because they won't like that at all. As far as community-based involvement, Battleground is accepting donations for the items that they can make with their students. Currently, they're looking for donations of Barbie shoes so they can make earrings out of those. She sounds very creative, doesn't she? And the community has been donating items, and they use them constantly to make the jewelry in this club that meets every week. The future plans with this jewelry club, they're planning for a giveaway or selling to their families, teachers, and the community, but they're working on having enough inventory, teaching them business skills, in order to start that. Currently, I think they do have some Halloween hair bows, if anyone is interested to purchase. But this intentional act at Battleground is teaching these students very, very good skills, not just their academic skills, but how they can be proud of themselves and learn to craft. So thank you so much, Ms. Beal, for being intentional and being an inspiration to these students. Thank you so much. At this time, for our intentional inspiration, we would like to recognize Ms. Crystal Best and Ms. Stephanie Campbell from Love Memorial. So, Ms. Stephanie Campbell is an AIG teacher, and Crystal Best teaches our English language learners. And they are starting Love's Compassion Project. So listen to the wonderful things that they are doing and the skills that they are teaching these students, it is amazing. Love Memorial's Compassion Project consists of a small group of students from the academically gifted and English language learners population at Love Memorial. As our student leadership team, their goal was to identify a problem in the community and develop a service project that will address this issue. Currently, I do believe the students are researching three areas of crisis: homelessness, children in care, and food insecurities. Once the students identify what area need they want to focus on in the community, they are then going to interview stakeholders within the area to gain a better perspective of the ways that they can meet the needs of that portion of the community that they're representing and researching. Then, the student leaders will design a school-wide project that will require them to learn certain skills like delegating tasks to their peers, as well as being able to manage the overall project. Right now, the students are currently working on their interview skills to prepare for a meeting with a community leader, and then evaluating the area of need that their project will address. Of course, as you can see, this is a long-term project. I would almost call this project-based learning and problem-based learning, don't you think so, ladies? But Love's Compassion Project is teaching them, just like Ms. Beal's club, some very, very good skills for living. So again, this project will conclude in May 2023, and we look forward to hearing the results of your project. So congratulations to you, and thank you for being so intentional with what you're doing with our students.
Thank you, that was exciting, lots of good recognitions tonight. Next on our agenda is superintendent updates and information items. Dr. Allen?
Yes, ma'am. So as Mr. Clary mentioned, Mr. Carpenter is our Principal of the Year, but just as a reminder, this is, October is National Principals Month, and so we are highlighting all 23 of our principals on our social media platforms, and do want to just send gratitude, a recognition of gratitude to all of our principals for doing a yeoman's job each and every day in leading our schools this year. Also want to draw everybody's attention to, we talk a lot about athletics tonight, but we are also in the middle of peak marching band competition season, and so I think we have halfway to go of our season, and each of our high school marching bands have done well and medaled in several different categories within the marching band competition. So I just want to send a congratulations and a thank you to all of our band parents, our band kids, performing middle school and high school as they go out mostly on Saturdays, and have a long weekend of marching competition. It's definitely well paying, it's paying off in good opportunities for our kids. Gaston College, we also want to just draw your attention, we started this a few years ago, but Gaston will be making a presence at our high schools to kind of help with promotion of the Career in College Promise, College Now program, but also just the opportunities that they provide our community. They'll be showing up this Friday night at North Lincoln to have a tent and can answer questions to parents at the football game. They'll be at Lincolnson when Wes Lincoln travels to Lincolnson on the 28th of October, and then they will make a presence at East Lincoln on November the 4th. Just also want to give credit to our partners there with Gaston College, and all they help us provide opportunities for our kids. Also wanted to remind our board and let the folks know that are watching us on the stream, Kristen Boston, a teacher at School of Tech, she was a finalist for the North Carolina CTE Teacher of the Year. She didn't win, but she was in the top tier of final candidates for that position. She was recognized in Colowee last week with the other finalists for that position. We're definitely proud of her and what she represents for us. And then, just to put on everyone's radar, we are getting visited by the state superintendent next week, and she'll be visiting us on Wednesday, the 19th, and we have quite the itinerary scheduled for her to visit, and it'll be mid-morning to middle-afternoon timeframe, so just look forward to showing off Lincoln County and our schools and our teachers and our kids and our partnerships with people from Raleigh, and she'll be bringing her entourage, about 11 different folks with her from DPI, and so it's a good time for us to showcase, so I look forward to that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Allen. Next, we have individuals or groups appearing before the board. We did not have anyone sign up per board protocol, but board policy also allows by majority-go-to-the-board individuals to appear before the board without following the established procedures if the matter is of an emergent nature. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak as a matter of emergent nature? Okay, we will move along to our action items. First, we have approval of bid for security fencing. I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the security fencing. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our board meeting calendar for 2023. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Do you make a motion?
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the board meeting calendar for 2023. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, please. I would like to ask that we table this motion until we can have further discussion. We talk about being intentional, and I feel like we may be leaving out some of our staff, the community and families that like to come to the work sessions. So I think we maybe need to talk about it, because it came up kind of quick, and are we really leaving, are we really thinking about all the staff, as, you know, we have an obligation to the community and the families and the entire staff.
So there is a motion on the floor currently that we will have to vote on. So I have a motion and a second.
I've got a comment to make.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, they have to finish.
Okay.
You can make it, you can discuss if you have comments.
I'm just saying, I didn't know she was gonna speak. Majority of our public, the educators, county commissioners, et cetera, there were, if our time changes at 3 o'clock, and I don't think they can work, their schedules around being able to come here or to listen, whatever, I don't know if it's against the law or not, all public meetings have to be in public. Am I quoting that wrong? Everything has to be in public.
I'll clarify that for you, Ms. Avery, these meetings will be open to the public, definitely. And our discussion last week that we had was simply for, really, we're kind of the last ones around us that are doing work sessions in the evening. All of our other districts are allowing our staff to do work sessions during the day, so this was really for our staff, if we can make it work for our staff in order to do our work sessions during the day instead of the evening to free up our staff's time in the evening to either be with their family or attend other board or other
And, and, and I'll make a point too, that nothing is voted on at our work sessions. So, there is a week's worth of time in there to communicate with people, to communicate with board members. There, you know, people are very aware of what happens at our work sessions, even though they're not here, they still are, you know, told and informed and policies stand open and all those things. The intent behind it really was just for our staff.
Which staff? Is that all the staff or the limited staff here or?
The staff that, the staff that are, have to be here in the evenings, and our other staff is not coming anyway to our work sessions.
But we all have obligations to the whole community, and we have, we know that we have to be here on Tuesday nights for certain meetings. So, I think it did help that we were moving the, the personnel to the end. That did give them extra time to leave early that we didn't have an hour or so in the beginning. So, I think we do care about our staff, and I think they are important, but I think we have to worry about all of the community like our mission.
And I, and I agree, and I think we do, I think we do. I agree with that 100%. Is there any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, we'll do it by a show of hands, just because I did not hear that.
I think that's always best when we vote, because I can't tell a lot of times when...
Thank you, Ms. Edner. Okay.
And it'd help you as well.
If you, I will just do raise your hand if you approve. And no vote?
No.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to our esports polit program. I will entertain a motion to approve on that.
I make the motion to approve that.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, we'll do it by a show of hands, just because I did not hear that.
I think that's always best when we vote, because I can't tell a lot of times when...
Thank you, Ms. Edner. Okay.
And it'd help you as well.
If you, I will just do raise your hand if you approve. And no vote?
No.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to our esports polit program. I will entertain a motion to approve on that.
I make the motion to approve that.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Next, we have policies which stood open for 25 days for input, which is Policy 7620, Payroll Deductions, and Policy 8320, Depositories. Entertain a motion to approve those policies that stood open for 25 days.
I make the motion to approve both policies.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we do have a need for closed session. I will turn it over to Mr. Shatley.
Madam Chair, we need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 under subsection A1, Discuss Confidential Matters in Law, Particularly Personnel and Student Matters, and under subsection A3, Discuss Matters That Are Protected by the Attorney-client Privilege.
Need a motion to go into closed session, please.
Make the motion.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now in closed session.
Sure, we are.
No, I'm not carrying.
We are now back in open session, no action was taken. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda items, which is approval of the minutes from the board work session on September 6th, the board meeting on September 13th, extended field trips, personnel recommendations and the personnel recommendations addendum, and then policies required to stand open 25 days for input, which was policy 4400 and policy 6560. I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
A motion, is there a second? Motion and a second to approve consent agenda items, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we have our reminders and announcements, board members if you'll take a look at those, we do have our next budget work session on October the 24th, and then we will have a work session on November the 1st, and then our regular board meeting on November the 8th. Lots of information on this tonight, so make sure you read over that. I will note the North Carolina School Boards Association Annual Conference, we need to know ASAP on that, some of you have let me know whether you can or cannot attend, but we need to know like by the end of, by the end of the week on that, the annual conference in Greensboro. Thank you.
I will say, board members, on my Friday update, I will send you the updated draft agenda for Ms. Truitt's visit on the 19th. If you can join us at each of our three spots, that's great. If you can join us for one, that's great. And if you can't do any, but you can come at the end and want to have a time to see her, I'll have that in there as well. So we're going to Massey School of Tech and Lincoln High School, and I'll map that out for you, and you can kind of catch us when you can, if you can.
Okay. Plus Delta? Lots of good recognitions tonight. Thought that was really good. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now adjourned.